Wonderful, okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to this virtual town hall meeting on democracy in the digital age. You can probably see from the screen, we are still experimenting with this format, the Lisbon Council, for those of you who've known us a while. We used to do a lot of events because we really enjoyed bringing people together to talk about things and form common views and see what we could do to move Europe forward. Obviously, it's become nearly impossible, but we've tried to recreate some of that magic online, and that's what we're going to do today. So I just wanted to say, in that context, we would appreciate if all of you would turn on your cameras. We want to see you, and to the extent that we can, we want to experience this event together with you as warmly and humanly as we possibly can in this strange new format. I'll just mention briefly, we are on the record, and we are recording this session, and it will be posted on our website later, so if you have an objection to that, please don't turn on your camera. We consider your turning on your camera your consent. And let me just repeat that we're delighted to have you all in the meeting with us here today. And we have a very special guest today, Averu Rover, the Vice President of the European Commission, Vice President for Values and Transparency. She's going to talk to us in a moment about the European Democracy Action Plan. I think, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Paul Hoffeins, I'm the President and co-founder of the Lisbon Council. Look, I think we all read the same newspapers, and we apparently all care about many of the same issues, or we wouldn't be together on this call here today. But maybe I say a couple of words about democracy in the digital age, if I can. Go back 10 years. The campaign of Barack Obama, the Arab Spring, the beginning of reforms in Iran, all of these were tremendous democratic events that in many ways were fueled by the power to connect that the Internet made possible. Now, I just, I mention that only because lately you see a different story in the newspapers. There's clearly an issue with disinformation, misinformation, of people trying to use this power of connection to undermine something that's very precious to all of us, and that's democracy itself. And this, in many ways, is what we're going to talk about here today. The Vice President and colleagues at the European Commission are going to give us a plan later this year, the European Democracy Action Plan, to try to, in some ways, bring the Internet back to its roots, to make it back into a tool for enhancing democracy, and not a tool that some people are using rather freely to try to undermine it. Vice President, before I hand over the floor to you, I'd just like to say briefly, we invited you here for a reason, not just because we're interested in this topic, but I believe that success in this area, and by success, I mean ensuring that our democracy is healthy and powerful and strong, and there for our children to enjoy too, I think it's going to take more than just legislation, it's going to take really an entire community of people, all of us working from different perspectives, with different starting points, but sharing that common goal, that we do strengthen our democracy, and it's in that spirit that we invited you here today. So let me just say, we look forward to hearing about your plans, to how you assess the situation. And I'll end with one final question to you, which I hope you'll address in your remarks, and that is, how can we help? Vice President, thank you for taking time to be with us, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me. You are already helping me by giving me a chance to have this discussion with you and to maybe gain some more inspiration, because we are now ahead of adopting the European Democracy Action Plan, which you mentioned, where we want to address many issues which are relating to the risks and threats to democracy, which we witness in the recent months and years. Indeed, as you said, we cannot cure the problems only with the regulation. This is my task here, and my colleagues' task, to come with meaningful rules, especially for the digital sphere, but we have to do much more. First of all, that the rules must be proportionate, and that they must address the real problems. I am a liberal, so you can imagine that I have the slogan that no regulation, good regulation, and only when it must be. And we believe that we need to have some meaningful rules for the digital sphere, because the things went too far. We are relying on voluntary schemes, we are relying on cooperation with the platforms, but we only have some platforms in our system of codes. We have the Code of Practice Against Disinformation, we have the Code of Conduct Against Hate Speech. We only have some platforms which cooperate with us, we do not cover the whole market, and we cannot rely 100% that the rules which are agreed on, as a gentleman agreement, will work. And so, we need the cooperation next to regulating, we need the cooperation with the digital world, with big tech, of course, also with the researchers, with the academics. We need to enhance our cooperation with the member states, because speaking about the problems like hate speech online, or illegal content online in general, and disinformation, it requires very good cooperation and mutual trust between the Commission, as the European legislator, and the member states. We live in a challenging year, some say it is a transformative year in many ways for our societies. I think it's our task to drive the transformation in the direction where it will do good to the people, to guarantee the people's fundamental rights, and to guarantee that democracy will survive the challenging times. We, of course, have to speak about the changes brought by the digital revolution, and when we speak about democracy, the question is whether we need to digitalize democracy or democratize digital. I think we have to do both. If I, I would like to refer to a slogan which was set by the first Czechoslovak president, Tomas Karik Masaryk, in around 1918, and in the following years, he always said that democracy is a discussion. Some say that democracy is an inevitable conflict, but I would keep this Masaryk slogan about the discussion. I fully agree, and what we see now is something which I called the privatization of discussion, because when we see what's happening with discussions in online sphere, where we see that we have been driven into the echo chambers and into the bubbles, where everybody agrees with everybody, then we are shocked in real world that it's not the case, that there are people with these different opinions. And that's why we want to focus also on this issue in the European Democracy Action Plan, how to minimize the impact of algorithms on the public debate, the algorithms which were created for a very good reason by those who want to sell better. You know, the platforms like Facebook, they are, it's the space for advertising, for selling, for business, and what we clearly see, that the method used to sell better the products to consumers, when it is used for selling better the opinions of people and politicians in political campaigning to citizens, that there is something wrong with this method. That's why in the European Democracy Action Plan, if you allow me to use the acronym ADAP, so we focus on this issue. We will look into the issue of disinformation in ADAP. And I want to explain what we plan to do on that, because whenever I speak about it on different fora, I hear the voices who say that we want to introduce some kind of censorship, so I want to deny it very sharply at the beginning. This is not our plan. There will be no arbiters of the truth in Europe, nor the Commission, neither the member state, and not even the platforms. I think we all remember Mark Zuckerberg, when he was in American Congress, and he said that he doesn't want to be the arbiter of the truth. I don't agree with him very often, but on this, I think this is the right concept, that nobody should be the only, an omnipotent owner of the truths which will be imposed on others. So in the ADAP, in the chapter on disinformation, we will more focus on the behavior of the actors, on increasing transparency of what's happening online. We want especially to, and we will especially focus on political campaigning and the time before elections, where we would like to see more transparency for political marketing online. We believe that the people should have clear information about who is campaigning, who is paying, what the subjects want, because this is also part of the democracy, that we need to guarantee free and fair elections. And we see that the political campaigning is shifting very quickly from offline to online sphere. In offline world, we are, I would even say, overregulated, and for online, at least half of the member states do not have any reflection of this change in their rules. So we will not only indicate or announce the legislation for political campaigning on a European level relating to European elections, but we will also issue recommendations for the member states, how to address the new situation, and how to address the risks stemming from online political campaigning. I don't have to stress how important it is to keep the principle of free and fair elections in Europe. We want elections to be the free and fair competition and level playing field for the candidates, for the real people, for their visions and opinions, for that discussion or conflict, of course, it is always a conflict before the elections. So we want all that, we don't want to enable the European space to be abused by those who want to use the dirty methods like Cambridge Analytica method. If you remember the shocking case, when we realized that the microtargeting, so access to private data and abuse of private data of people for dirty political campaign, it is something we do not want to see in Europe. So we are going to focus on free and fair elections from this point of view, and we also want to make clear that to use the methods of artificial intelligence have some limits, but I don't want to speak long about that, maybe we can talk about it later. This is especially relevant, to mention it in relation to hate speech online, because when we discuss how to tackle the issue, or how to fight against hate speech, which we understand as violent messaging, which has the potential to create crime and hate crime in real life, we want the platforms to work with each member state language, with the case law in each member state, we want them to understand very well the situation in each member state. And it is a tough task for the platforms like Facebook, but we have to insist that this is not one size fits all. And whatever we do around the content, we have as a primary principle the freedom of speech. So in case, I'm still with this hate speech issue, in case the platforms detect cases of hate speech, they have to make an assessment whether it is manifestly clear-cut case, somebody attacked and threats to life and violence, and in case it's not such a manifestly clear-cut case, they have to leave it there, because we want to, we mean it seriously, we want to protect the freedom of speech. On disinformation again, what you will see in ADAP, so focus on the behavior of the actors, on more transparency. We do not want to introduce the censorship, we want to enhance or support the work of the fact-checkers and professional high-quality journalism, this is where we are pushing the platforms to go. And we made an exception this year, if you, maybe you noticed, in July, we published COVID-19-related communication on disinformation. This is exceptional case, where we say that the authoritative content, so the content which is, if I may say, produced by the ministries of health and health authorities, should be prioritized online, so that the people first see the content which is there, placed by those who understand what COVID-19 is, and what are the safe measures to protect the people's health and safety. But this is really an exception, and I am mentioning it because we work already with the term authoritative content, but it's in this COVID-19 context, and this is important to stress. In ADAP, we also want to focus on the protection of the work of independent journalism and media pluralism. We will announce the legislative action, or the initiative for 2021, for the next year, the measures against the so-called SLAB issue, the strategic lawsuit, for those who are not in the picture here, who do not understand what it is. It's about the abuse of litigation against the journalists, which is massive in Europe. Here I speak about professional journalists who do properly their job, and about those who want to silence them by numerous litigations, which are costly, which are sometimes started in another member state. Just to give you an illustration of one case, I'm sure you remember the horrible tragedy which happened in Malta, the assassination of Daphne Pirlo in Galicia, the journalist who wrote critical articles about the money laundering cases and abuse of power, and who was murdered. The perpetrators have not been punished yet. And her family, her sons, still now, after, I think, two years, face numerous litigations, which are up and running in United Kingdom. And this is costly, this is very demanding for the family, and so that's why we realize that this is a problem which we should focus on in our European Democracy Action Plan. I have a lot of text in front of me, which I didn't use, which is more or less an analysis of the situation, but I am aware that I am a politician who should leave the analysis for the knowledgeable people and for the experts like you, and who should be able to come with the solutions and the ways forward, using the regulation, plus the support of many others who want to go in the same direction. So I want to say that we cannot protect democracy and fundamental rights only through top-down measures, the regulation cannot be enough. We need to do much more to convince the people that democracy delivers, for instance, delivers social justice, and that, to convince the people that democracy can work and should work for them, and that they are part of it. We need to convince the people to use their right to vote. That's why it's so important that we guarantee free and fair elections, so that their trust is not disappointed. So these are our plans for the ADAP. Next to ADAP, we will adopt the Digital Services Act, which will be hardly regulation, which will increase the responsibility of the platforms, which will bring new elements to oversight of Internet, again, no censorship, just the long-awaited rules which we need. And if we manage this, we will make the most of the chance to be the world leaders. I know it sounds maybe overambitious, but we believe that the European Union is well-placed to come with meaningful regulation, which will not overshoot, which will address the problems, which will help us to keep the plan that technology serves the people, not the people serve the technologies. We managed to do this, to have this global leadership in protection of private data, and I think that we should try to continue this path. And if we manage, if we show that in the European regulation, Europe has healthy instincts towards Internet and possible digital threats, while recognizing all the good things, which we are, especially in these days, enjoying having the possibility of digital communication, that if Europe manages this, we would really like to connect with the United States, with Japan, with other global players, democratic global players, to set the world or global standards, not only for data privacy, but also for better Internet for people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, a very enthusiastic but mechanically muted round of applause there. Vice President, thank you for that. I like, I love what you say, convince people that democracy delivers. I think in many ways, that's our challenge, and it's also a perfect introduction to our next speaker. Raphael Glucksmann joins us for the first time. It's very nice to meet you, Raphael. He's not been with us in Brussels for that long, but he's left a very shining light already. Raphael, for those of you who don't know him, is a member of the European Parliament from the Socialists and Democrats faction, and also the Chair of the Special Committee on Foreign Interference in All Democratic Processes in the European Union, including disinformation. You have to take a breath before you say that.
Okay.
Good, well, that's much easier. It's a pleasure to have you here, sir. The floor is yours. We look forward to hearing what you have to say, and also to working with you, because you'll be very important in what emerges from this Democracy Action Plan, too.
Thank you. And also, I want to thank the Vice President for remarks, and to tell her, and she knows it, that our Democracy Action Plan is very, very much awaited, and we are all looking forward, not only in the Special Committee, but in the Parliament, to work on this with her, because it's true that steps have been taken in the recent years, and we don't start from scratch, but these steps are really, really limited, and we are confronted with threats that need us to stop being naive, because to tell the truth, until now, there was a naivety, both in the European Union debate and in the internet sphere. And this naivety was based on the simple idea, that if you are open, then you won't have enemy, you only have friends. And that's simply not true. History is not over, we have enemies, we have people hating democracy, we have people hating our institutions, and they are going to use every possible means to do that. So, of course, the idea of our Special Committee, and I'm sure, knowing the Vice President, that it's the same for the Commission, the idea is not to become another Ministry of Truth, like a Norwegian Ministry of Truth, and to go after every fake news on the Internet, telling to people what they are able or allowed to think and to write, and we are not there in a way to investigate on false informations or on false opinions in the net, because we know since ancient Greece, that it's very hard to determine what's true and what's false, and that basically we live in a world of opinion. So our society is beyond the idea that you have a free confrontation of opinions, and that should stay like that. But the paradox of our moment is that people who actually don't respect at home any rights for confrontation of opinion are using the fact that there is no regulation on the platform to actually subvert democracies, allowing free debate. And this is really a tough job that we have, because how we can regulate that without closing it, because it would be obviously crazy to think that we can save democracy by putting an end to free debate. So, on the contrary, what we should do is find ways to actually make sure that we are preserving democracy and free speech by putting regulations. And the first thing we have to understand, that's why we wanted this committee not to be on disinformation just, but to be on foreign interference. And why we wanted that in the Parliament? Because we think that basically, it's not fake information or disinformation that we are facing, it's a systematic hybrid war on our institutions and our principles, and our interests too. And this hybrid war has a disinformation component. But when you take a look at the actors of these threats and this disinformation campaign, you understand that you have a troll factory in San Petersburg, and the same people who are actually shaping this information campaign are also trying to buy politicians, are also trying to launch hackers against institutions, or to finance political parties that are hostile to our institution, and especially to the European institution. So it's a general problem, and disinformation is part of it, is part, it's one component out of it. The way we want to do, and that's why in the Parliament, it's a transversal committee, it involves, of course, matters of Libe Committee and AfCO and the internal committees, but also security committees and foreign affairs committees. Because what we want to do is to try to establish the panorama of these threats in the first part of our committee, and then work with the Commission, work with the think tanks, work with the NGO, to try to offer tools to protect our democracy. And what we have thought in our program, that of course, as Vice President has said, regulations and interdictions are just one component, and I would say even maybe one small component of what we can do to preserve our democracies and make them more resilient when it comes to foreign interference and attempts to subvert our democracies. We have a problem in Europe, that all our regulations are different from country to country. And if we want to one day have possibility to have a real pan-European campaign and pan-European debate, if we want basically to catch up with what was happening in the aristocracies of the 18th century, where you had this European debate, and we are still far from it, when Voltaire was writing to Frederick the Great, and intellectuals were responding to each other on a European level with less national dimension, if we want that to happen, and to be more democratic than just this aristocratic debate and elite debate, then we need common rules. And we need actually to, I know it's not a matter of EU decision here, but we need the rules to actually, from state to state, to converge with a similar philosophy. But it's not only interdictions or regulations against hate speech or against foreign interference, it's also about education, it's also about public funding for free media, and about public funding for political parties, because that's not directly connected to disinformation, but one thing that we are investigating on is how foreign money from actors that organize disinformation are pouring in as a political debate, and political parties, how it can bias the political debate and free and fair elections. So the approach should be holistic. We cannot have just an approach of regulating and putting limits, which are very much needed, and it's over with the idea of totally free Internet and open space, because that's because that supposes that all the actors are at least sincere and even when they are mistaken, which is not the case in the real world. So if you let the wolf come in, then you will eat all the sheep's and that's, that's why you need door at the entrance. But that's not enough. You need the sheep's to also be more educated, more empowered. And, and that's, that's really comes to, I'm so sorry to be agreeing so much with the Vice President because I like confrontation, but, uh, but i- i- it supposes, um, uh, a much bigger attention pays to the ecosystem of democracy, democratic ecosystem as a whole. And we have examples. We have examples because we are not the first one to suffer from this hybrid threats. We have examples and it's politically incorrect when it comes to China, but we have Taiwanese example that should be studied. And we have examples of countries that fought against Russian campaigns, these diplomatic states, Georgia, Ukraine. We can learn from them and, and from their approach, from the mistakes they have made and from the success they had. So i- it's really a huge task and, and we are very much delighted that the debate starts to be quite vivid in Brussels and thanks to you in this, uh, conversation. Thank you so much.
Raphael, thank you so much. And by the way, I, I wasn't aware that Voltaire had corresponded with Frederick the Great. I'm going to look that correspondence up after this call. It kind of gives new, new meaning and new potential to the Franco-German alliance. So thank you for, uh, for, for sharing that with us.
They were, they were corresponding in French.
Well, that's all right. We, we can, we can handle French around here. Um, I, our next speaker is Paolo, Paolo Cello. Did I pronounce that correctly, Paolo? If I didn't, I, I apologize in advance. Paolo's the founder and Secretary General of the European Association for Viewer Interest, better known as EAVI, which has been very active in this debate. And we're delighted you can be here with us today and looking forward to hearing, uh, hearing what you have to say about the very important work that you do.
Thank you, Paul. In, uh, well, in fact, there, there are so many points that, and reflections that, that, uh, now, so we can discuss about the, the, about points that have been raised. I would pick some at random, starting from some considerations that the Vice President, uh, has done. And indeed, is, I think is, uh, is only fair to acknowledge that it's Europe and the European Commission that is taking action, uh, in this, uh, in this, uh, domain is not, uh, Poland or Greece or Germany, certainly it's not Russia or China, it is not America these days. So I think that, that your level of ambition and somehow the hope that, that you can provide to, to the citizens of Europe or, or even is, uh, leading, uh, is the, this debate is, uh, should, uh, should be put forward with, with determination. Indeed, uh, is actions, who are the enemies and so forth, is, uh, many things about the regulation or not, or how is, uh, are important things to, to, to be discussed, uh, about. But indeed, we have to, uh, to, 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 to look carefully about where our world is going, uh, today. Is indeed, uh, the, the reasons that have informed the, the activities that you are doing and, and specifically the, the action plan on democracy is the state of our democracies. This is not, uh, this is not something new. It's something that, that has, has happened for the last 10 years, uh, in, including within Europe. And, uh, and this state is quite terrible. So it's, uh, very much of our, uh, future depend on, on the actions that you are doing. And indeed, if not Europe, who else? So well done for that. I, I would add just to, to add to the complexity of, of the, the discussion is, uh, by the way, I, I briefly remind that EAVI is conducting our own conversation online for a month, starting is, yeah, the end of, of October. Is, uh, one element that is, uh, that is, I would like to remind is that, uh, um, i- if democracies are not working well, is, uh, is also maybe because people are not so much interested in democracy. I, I, I put it as a, as a provocative point, but they seem to me, I work on this for the last 20 years, a bit unconscious about what it means to live in a democratic, uh, uh, environment, or what, what would happen if, and the importance of it, if, if this wouldn't be the case. So the, the action plan and your action, I see as a, as a sort of, uh, uh, a way by which Europe can reconquer its citizens. And, uh, and, uh, indeed, this is, uh, this is the only, the only asset that, that Europe, uh, has available. My, my other point, and I come more to, to what we are doing is with, with media literacy is indeed that people are, are spending a lot of time on, in front of a screen. It's a bit of 20 years in a, in a, in a person's life, is the days and nights. So it's when we come to, to media literacy, the process that we have done with EAVI is, uh, is very similar to the one that, that we have followed for, for your plan. That is why I appreciate it. We decided to focus on what is more important first, that is values, that is approaches, public interest. Is, uh, as far as we are concerned, is awareness, understanding, critical consciousness, as we decide to call, uh, critical literacy instead, the, the digital wellbeing. So we, we decide, and I think that this is a good, hopefully a good strategy, to follow on the roots of the tree that we want to grow. Because it's, we notice that Europe is not becoming more media literate. People are not becoming all of a sudden more intelligent, more critical thinker. Is, uh, is, uh, the, the, this is not happening unless you have a, a, a soil that is a bit fertile so that these virtues can, can grow. And indeed, it takes time, but it's, uh, it, it is great if somebody would, would, uh, would, uh, would indicate a, a direction. Indeed, indeed, I think is, uh, we are living in a new world. I mean, it's, it's not, uh, it's not just the COVID, the climate change, the, the financial crisis, uh, the, the role of technologies. So it's, uh, we see media literacy in, in, that obviously is dealing, so the skills that people have to, 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 to acquire to, to learn to live in this environment. I agree with, with Raphael. It's, uh, it's indeed a new environment. Is, uh, is something that cannot be governed upon is if you don't have new citizens living in, in that environment. It's not, uh, and also because otherwise I become a bit too, too rhetorical or, or naive or spiritual in a way. It's only at that point that pragmatically people will have the, the, the strength to ask to their respective governments and politicians that will be forced to listen if they say, hey, I want to learn about media education and technology at school. My children are studying on the same books that I was using 40 years ago. Is, uh, it, it will become at one point obvious that, uh, I mean, it's, uh, of course you need the media literacy skills. We live in a media, in, in society. I remember being naive when we were dealing with DG Information Society, which is a bit hilarious in now, given that we are living in, in a disinformation, uh, area these days. But obviously, we need to learn to drive that car. We need to learn to drive first if we want to, to, to use the, the car. I, I, in the end, because it's, uh, is, I could be a bit confusing, but I am, uh, I am available to, to, to discuss about any of these topics more, more in detail. I want to congratulate is the Vice President because I, I think you have the, the approach that was very much needed. And you put it forward with, uh, it, it seems at least this is depression, is, uh, is, uh, the, the, with trust and integrity and determination is obviously within the limits of our politics. But, uh, but I really wish you, uh, good luck. It's my, uh, because really people that are the ultimate beneficiaries of, of your, of your action, they, they, they need that. Is, uh, and people in civil society, actually, let me just mention that when we deal with civil society for, for Europe and, and this budget, we, we are a bit of an Indian reserve. Thank you.
Well, Paolo, we're running into a little bit of time trouble, but I can't help but ask you a very quick question. I appreciate if you could keep your answer short so we can get to the other speakers. But you said in passing, Europe is not becoming more media literate, um, which is kind of a shocking statement because if that's the case, then we really do have a problem here. How, how can, why aren't we becoming more media literate? And how can we, how can we get those skills to people quickly? They can, they can arrive at their own conclusions about things, but they need to be able to read the news and tell what's real and what's fake.
Well, people, is, they, they, they will never learn something if, if they, they don't want to learn it. It's, uh, we can talk a lot about, about, uh, uh, functional literate and the role of education and so forth. Is, I would say that first of all, it's not a good strategy to say to somebody that is unable or, or, uh, stupid somehow to, to offend him, telling him that it's so. It, it doesn't work. Is, uh, I think that this is indeed the role that many stakeholders, they have to do together. There is a role and responsibility, responsibility of the, the political system, policymakers, the education, uh, civil society, the media themselves. I think that we have to consider the media as, as an ally. I mean, if we have to be pragmatic. And indeed, is, I think that, uh, that, uh, we have to come together and see what we can do together. Is, uh, is, uh, this is, uh, we have to have an impact. Is, uh, this discussion is limited, as you say, to 100 people and, and Facebook, which 2 billion people. So what, what, what do we do? Is, uh, I think we have to be both a bit visionary and, but also determined to, to pursue that.
Yeah, well, I don't know. A hundred, a hundred people, it depends on your yardstick. The, the Communist Party in Russia began with 16, so, uh, so great things can happen. Starting with good conversations in small groups. I don't know if that was a great thing, but they were very small. Hans Martins, the head of Digital Citizenship at European Schoolnet. For those of you who don't know European Schoolnet, it's a network of 34 ministries of education, uh, across Europe. But they have, I think, a particularly interesting mission statement, which is to bring innovation in teaching and learning to our key stakeholders. Hans, we're delighted you could be with here, with us, with, with us here today. Want to thank you for your leadership and work on this issue and, and tell us what you see here and how we can, how we can preserve and protect democracy in Europe.
Many thanks, Paul, and many thanks also to the Lisbon Council to, to organize this meeting. And of course, to the Vice President and other speakers for sharing their views on the European Democracy Action Plan. Um, I've indeed been asked to deliver some remarks, um, while saying a few words about the work of European Schoolnet also. Um, and I've been told I could speak from heart, which actually is quite interesting because part of the point I would like to make, and I think it actually follows from some of the points that Pardo was making, is that to make democracy work in a digital age, especially when children and young people are involved, we need to find a way to combine rational and emotional approaches. But before I go there, so yes, indeed, European Schoolnet, Network of Digital Education. Um, and given our remit, which you've just nicely mentioned, um, I think it's inevitable that in the conversations we have and the projects we run, we end up focusing a lot on the role of digital technology in education and in society more generally. Um, and within that context, we have a range of activity lines brought together under the Digital Citizenship umbrella. And it covers areas like online risks and opportunities, online safety, digital skills, digital inclusion, data privacy, hate speech and so forth. Um, and we do feel very passionate about children's rights in a digital environment. Um, I think it's a small step from children's rights, digital citizenship to European democracy in a digital age. Um, and actually, we would like to present very simply a, a model, a strategy, which we've been using quite successfully, I think, across many of our projects. And I think that's also our view on how the action plan could be shifted further. And the model starts from a basic notion of, of citizenship in the sense that indeed, we believe that children, young people, they need to learn how to make constructive and ethical choices. Um, but on top of this and in combination with it, um, we add a media literacy component, where children and young people learn to develop not only critical analysis skills, but also how to create media. Um, and then, and I think that's quite important, we do combine it with this idea of social and emotional learning because the everyday experience of children, young people, it's not just purely a rational thing. Um, and if you talk about media literacy levels, I think there's a bit of a risk that you just approach it as an analytical thing, while actually your everyday experience, and that's not only for children, young people, but I think for people in general. Um, it's often about finding a healthy balance between online, offline, uh, media use. And a lot of it is about understanding your own personal relationship you have with digital media. So more concretely, what does it mean for the European Democracy Action Plan? What are the kind of projects or initiatives we feel should be supported? Um, and of course, there's a lot of good work happening already at Commission level across different areas of work. I think, for example, the Digital Education Action Plan is a similar example and there's quite a nice complementarity there. So that's, that's obvious. Um, but I think first of all, when we talk about this topic, um, we need to start talking about it from an early age. So a recent project we've done, the School of Social Networks, starts talking about these issues with children even well before they reach the legal age of digital consent. Um, and that's also something we notice when we have this conversation with our ministries. Like, a lot exists in terms of resources, curricula for secondary school, for older, for teenagers. But what do we do with the younger children? Um, and they may not be yet officially on some of the more popular social media platforms. But actually, social media is already very much part of their everyday, uh, experience. Secondly, I think we need to be innovative and also versatile in the kind of projects we develop. For example, a recent project we did, which was funded by the Commission Rights Equality and Citizenship Programme, was about online hate speech. Um, and it's very about, it's very much not about telling young people what is good or bad, what is right or wrong. I think a couple of speakers have, have, uh, spoken to that, that particular point already. Um, but it's really about developing a toolkit which can empower children, young people to play an active role in their immediate environment. And I think these kind of activities shouldn't only happen within a classical, traditional school setting. It's also about setting up peer-to-peer schemes. It's about working, uh, with youth workers, with vulnerable groups. Um, and I think industry has within this specific place an important role to play as well. Um, and thirdly, I think we need to foster partnerships within and between European countries. Um, one of the projects we've been actively involved in for quite a long time is the Berlin Not-for-Kids Initiative, again, also funded by the Commission. Um, and I think it's a really good model because it provides coordination at European level, but it also coordinates a network of national safe internet centers. And each of these are providing a meeting place for stakeholders to meet and to coordinate and to work, uh, together. And I think COVID in particular has been a very good example of how this can work because as a network, we were able to react very quickly and to provide the required, um, support, counseling, guidance, education efforts, uh, on the ground. And I think in a nutshell, that's also the more general role that European Schoolnet tries to play. So of course, policies, curricula, it's really important. We need to continue working on this. But if you really look on the ground, what, what the biggest need is, it's not just about the curricula, it's about more widespread and more effective implementation in practice. And for this, we need infrastructure, but also educational resources, professional development opportunities, and this ongoing exchange between public and private stakeholders. Which brings me to my two final points. So one, I've been talking about children, young people, we're talking about democracy. So I think something we feel very deeply passionately about is that whenever you have this discussion, if you're shaping curricula, if you're shaping projects, activities on media literacy, disinformation, misinformation, you can't do it in a credible way if you don't have children and young people sitting around the table at the early design stage, uh, already. I think it's them who are driving the future of the digital world, so you can't have a conversation about them without giving them the opportunity to be actively involved. And two, and I think it's equally important, um, I think we all want to believe, uh, in a very positive way in the power of children and young people to become active, independent, critical citizens. Um, but of course, we can't expect them to fix a global business model, which might be to begin with. So I think, again, we've heard some of these things, uh, about algorithms, platform features, and how they are being primarily designed, uh, to make profits. I know it's a difficult nuanced debate to be had. I think there are different perspectives there. Um, but of course, we need to have a legislation, a regulatory system, which is sort of fixing the big things. And then within that context, uh, we can try to work together with children, young people, uh, to make a difference, uh, in the future. together with children, young people, to make a difference in the future. So I think I would leave it there.
Okay. Thank you for that, Hans. And I'd like to turn to Marisa Jimenez. Marisa, we're delighted you could be with us. For those of you who don't know Marisa, she's Director and Deputy Head of EU Affairs at Facebook. You know, the problem with Facebook is you just never hear anything about it. What are you guys up to? I'm kidding, of course. You're in the news a lot, and we look forward to hearing a little bit about what you're doing on this topic and what you're thinking about how we can protect and defend democracy best going forward. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, and thank you for inviting me. I just have to say that it's been a wonderful panel, and it's great in a way to come at the end, because that allows to really reflect on some of the things that I have heard today. And then, actually, I'll talk a little bit about, quickly, about what Facebook is doing. But I have to say that in this panel, we all agree, if we can come out with one idea, is that the EDAP, the European Democracy Action Plan, comes at the right place, that it is good news that Europe has decided that it is important to come up with rules, clear rules on these issues. And not because these issues are important to be ruled about, but also because we need to do it at a European level. So I think that that is fundamental. So if we don't have a lot of time just to put on the table, that is the right thing to do. Because talking about democracy, I think it's very important to talk about democracy through the democratic process, where we can have everyone and all perspectives at table. I think that, so we consider ourselves as a democratizing force. Facebook, again, people come to Facebook to communicate and share their views and their perspectives, different types of people, including politicians, including civil society, to bring their perspectives and debates. And you've heard this from us a lot, but we want to repeat it again, that obviously, with this impact comes the need for us to have increased responsibility. And there has been a shift. There's been a shift since 2016, in terms of funds, in terms of resources, of people working to make the platform safe, against misinformation and disinformation. And frankly, more than 200 elections in experience. So what we can bring is our experience, where we see the gaps, where we also think that we need help. What else can we do at Facebook to really fulfill the objectives that the Vice President and others have outlined here? I think that if I can say just a couple of things before I give the floor back to you, I think that it is the distinction between disinformation and misinformation is critical. And I subscribe to everything that MEP Gluckmann has said here, in that disinformation is a completely different animal to misinformation. Disinformation is about willingness to manipulate the public discourse. And there, Facebook believes that we need a framework, and we need to work together, we need from structural research, best practices, sanctions, to perpetrators. That is an area that is yet to be explored, and that people don't talk about that very much. So very happy, and we're happy to see the Special Committee in the European Parliament addressing this particular issue. When it comes to misinformation, again, our approach is really to remove very harmful health misinformation, but at the same time, try to promote authoritative sources of content. For instance, against voter suppression, we provide the authoritative sources of information where to vote, or how or when to vote on COVID, as well as the Commissioner has, as the Vice President has noted. So remove, reduce, provide right sources of information, and focus and support quality reporting. Last but not least, and I leave it here, digital literacy is fundamental. And we, as the speakers, SchoolNet and INAVI, would like to really promote getting away from the concept of digital literacy as digital skills, and going towards an approach of digital citizenship. And we hope that the European Action Plan can be that piece of policy instrument that will really boost digital citizenship. And you can definitely count on Facebook in this area as well.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was muted. Marisa, that was absolutely fascinating. I heard you say three things, actually, that really interested me concretely: structural research, best practices, and sanctions. That's quite an agenda in itself, just those three things. Certainly, livers that could go together to make this program rather successful. Look, we've gone way over time, and my intention originally was to take some questions, but I know the Vice President has a hard stop at four. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to the Vice President and invite you to weigh in on any of these points that you would like to come back on, and return perhaps to my original question, which is, how can we help? I think you're muted. Can you unmute her, please? She's muted still. I think there may be a problem on the Burleymont side there. There you are. Hello? No?
I've sent a request to the Vice President to unmute.
Okay. If you can hear us, you need to unmute on your side, whoever is operating the computer there. Are you in? Are you in? Well, I knew something was going on today. It seems to be, you seem to be, you seem to be working on our side. Krista, there's no way for you to unmute her?
I've sent the request. She has to accept it.
I do apologize.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome. Oh, there you are. Look at this.
It's very capable of technologies.
Yeah, and I see the great Dan Brant. Thank you, Dan, for helping us with this.
Yeah, it was not a trick to escape the answer. But I would be happy to use, I don't know, two, two, three minutes to make some concluding remarks on my side. I have to leave. And Marisa, you are right. It's good to speak at the end, because at the end, we normally are more clever than at the beginning, which I will try to prove now. It's interesting how the debate reminded me, my last week panel with Madeline Obride and Ivan Kastef, because they said similar things that it does not suffice to say that democracy is morally better system. We need to show that it is an efficient and overall successful system. And especially now in COVID time, we have to work more to convince the people that democracy is better system of governance than autocracy. When I remember the boxes coming to Europe from China, with the masks, with the slogan "From China with Love", and avalanche of propaganda that China is managing the disaster better than democratic systems. I think it was a very worrying wake-up call for all democrats.
Absolutely.
And I remember well the situation around Chernobyl. Believe me, dictatorship cannot manage the crisis better than democracy. So this is one of the lessons we learned in COVID. I think the debate showed clearly that we must avoid one mistake, that we should not be lamenting and accusing the platforms for all bad things, accusing the platforms for spreading lies, and accusing the citizens that they believe them. We have not done enough to defend the facts and to communicate with the citizens. It is also one of the lessons in COVID. This was very clear that the sector of health has to defend the facts and improve the strategy communication and communication of the things which need to be communicated. Because if we do not communicate with the citizens, it's also a sign of some kind of arrogance. Some of you said that aristocratic habits or elites, which is cut off the citizens. This must be improved. And I think that also in our communication on COVID-related disinformation, you read there that the Commission and the Union has to increase or improve the strategy communication. Thank you for mentioning the resilience and education. We want to reflect all that in our EDAP, but it was very important for me to hear from you how to formulate several things. And just to repeat something which was already indicated by Mr. Gluckmann, that we need to take the holistic approach. In EDAP, we want to get a grip of bad actions by bad actors. So to expose and deter the cases, to lower the incentives and control manipulation, and focus on the channels, and to empower the people to increase awareness and resilience. And also, we are going to present new definition of disinformation and distinction between disinformation, manipulation, and foreign influence. So it should be quite a precise concept paper, which will also indicate how we approach several important things. So coming back to the question, how can you help? Everybody has some homework. I have a homework, not overshoot the regulation and to address the risks, and to promote the new rules through the very difficult legislative process. Here, I rely on the European Parliament and Mr. Gluckmann and the committee. And civil society has a role, the professional media have their role, the democratic politicians in the EU, which said many times before that it should be for the EU to regulate, that we do not want fragmentation in the member states on this important thing. And there is a role for the citizens. But I would have to come back to the beginning, that first of all, we need to convince them that democracy is the best possible system, and that they are invited to improve it. Because this is not the end of history. We have been naive. Democracy is not a perfect mobile. We have to defend it and promote it all. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. I'll be very important to just a few words of conclusion, if I might. I think democracy is a gift, and it's something we all inherited from the people who came before us. Some of us, actually, including some people on this call, have had to fight for it within their lifetime, and they managed to do that successfully. Congratulations for that. It's under unprecedented challenge right now, and it's up to us to fight for it, too. I just maybe in conclusion, like to echo what the Vice President said, which is that all of us, everyone on this call, everyone in this meeting, has a piece of the solution. And the important thing is that we come together and make sure that those pieces add up to a coherent, powerful, and effective whole, because that's actually what democracy is about, isn't it? It's all of us contributing to a better outcome at the end of the day, the best that we can. Look, I'd like to thank everyone on this call. I'm sorry we didn't get around to questions. It's just the topic is too large to fit into a framework this small. And with your permission, we'll come back to this sooner rather than later, and maybe give it a little more time. And I hope then to welcome all of you to that call and to that discussion. And on that note, maybe, Krista, you can unmute everyone, and we will give a very warm round of applause to our speakers, and also, of course, to the Vice President. Godspeed to all of you and the work that you do. Okay. Thank you so much.